Our flag salute this morning is going to be led by our CEO, Tom Miller. If you please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. And would you please read the meeting procedures?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of October 6, 2009. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there's a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cellphones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Anne. We'll begin this morning with public comment. Anybody wishing to address the board on any item not on our agenda today, please come forward, and we'd like to have your name and address, please.
I'm Chuck Thiel. I'm the business representative for the Placer Public Employees Organization, Stationary Engineers Local 39. The address is 3272 Fortune Court, Auburn, California. I've been asked by the PPEO board to read a letter and present you with a petition in regards to the recent decision by various departments to eliminate alternative work schedules due to the MTO agreement. The widespread elimination of these schedules has come to a cost to the county. It has adversely impacted employee morale and service delivery to the public while increasing the county's operating costs. Because of these impacts, county employees circulated a petition that was eventually signed by 510 of their coworkers. On behalf of the union membership, I'm forwarding this petition to you. In addition to employee morale, there are other impacts to the public that should not be overlooked. For instance, there are costs and inconveniences to the taxpaying public that will increase due to the elimination of the 980 and the 410 schedules. The most obvious increase is that employees will now be driving county vehicles 10 to 20 percent more often. The elimination of the alternative work schedules has also reduced the hours in a day that employees can provide services to the public. This time is often utilized by the public to obtain services at the end of their work day. Now county employees are only available eight hours a day instead of nine or 10. The extended shift was a convenience to the public that is now gone. Elimination of this extra hour in the workday helped to reduce overtime pay as well. The reason for this is that while unexpected circumstances may keep an employee over by an hour, rarely do they require for somebody to come in on a day off. Without the extra hour too available at the straight time rate, the county will now be paying time and a half more often. The decision to eliminate the alternative work schedules has also increased costs to employees through an increase in commuting expenses and childcare for the extra day of work. Furthermore, sick leave use will go up as employees are no longer able to schedule medical appointments on their regular day off. However, the greatest loss is in employee morale and its impacts on work productivity. Clearly, the ramifications of eliminating the alternative work schedules will outweigh against the benefits of having them in place. We've been told that neither the CEO's office nor the Board of Supervisors has directed the various county managers to eliminate the alternative work schedules. And we now ask that the board state affirmatively to the county managers and administrators that alternative work schedules have a value to both the county and county employees and should be allowed whenever possible. This would result in a win-win situation, which would be beneficial to all concerned. The union would like to meet with the county administration to discuss this further. We look forward to continuing to work together with the board and county administration on innovative methods to deal with the current economic crisis. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I have copies.
If you just give me a hand there, thank you. Anyone else wish to make public comment? Going once, twice? I'll close public comment. Supervisors committee reports. Jennifer's got one. Ned Kirk?
This is not actually a committee report, but I just wanted to let my fellow supervisors know that I had the opportunity to go out last week to Meta Vista and look at the mercury extraction process that NID is proposing to go ahead with over the next three to five years at the Chevero/Taykert Quarry. Very interesting process, taking mercury out of Combi Lake. While we were there, they got about, I believe it was six grams out of about half a cubic yard of kind of muddy silt that they were processing. And negligible gold, I'm sorry to say, but you know, a reasonable amount of mercury. And I think it's a really good program that they're proposing doing there. My one concern with it, that I'm going to be watching very closely, is additional truck traffic on Combi Road. There is a proposal that if they don't provide the gravels and the sands to the Chevero plant there locally, that that will be shipped out of the area along Combi Road and then Meta Vista Road. So that is something I expressed a concern to NID. And they've committed to working with me and the community to minimize that impact whenever possible. There wasn't mitigated an egg deck on it, so it looks like if they can really get their funding in line, they'll be moving ahead with that in the next couple of years. And the reason I bring this to us as a board is because this is a pilot project that will probably be moving, if successful, to all our districts because the issue with mercury in our waterways is found in all our districts. And just wanted to give you guys a heads up on it. Looks like potentially it's a really great program for the environment. As I said, I do have a few concerns with it, but I'm hoping that NID will be really proactive in addressing those. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kirk?
Yeah, just wanted to update the board on the LEDPA determination, the least environmentally damaging practical alternative determination for Route 5 of the Placer Parkway or the Alternative 5, the northernmost alignment. We actually have now received the LEDPA from the EPA, and we are anticipating receipt of a letter from Army Corps of Engineers any day. So it looks like the federal agencies are now finally onboard with LEDPA on Alternative 5, and that allows us to move into Tier 2 of this process. And so, very excited about that.
Good job.
Actually selecting the specific alignment on the ground and starting a project moving forward.
Good job. Thank you. You and Robert have put a lot of time in that. All right, we'll move on now to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, two items on consent that I'd like removed. Item number 10A. I believe 10A is the only item in 10, but 10A. And with that, if there's nothing else, I'd move approval of consent.
Second. Roll call.
Euler?
Aye.
Wigan?
Yes.
Holmes?
Montgomery?
Yes.
Rockcom?
Yes. All right, we'll take up 10A.
Mr. Chairman, I request the removal of 10A just so that I may abstain.
Okay. Let's move approval of item 10 on consent.
Second.
Roll call.
Holmes?
Yes.
Wigan?
Yes.
Euler?
Abstain?
Montgomery?
Yes.
Yes. 17B, Adult System Care.
Yes, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, just really quickly, the only reason that I ask that this item be removed is it looks like, if I'm reading the California Mental Health Services Authority Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement, where we are getting into or opting into a JPA, a Joint Powers Authority. And I note that the JPA, I'm guessing it primarily receives funding from State of California through Prop 63? Okay. One of the, the reason that I asked that it be removed is one of the powers of the authority, item B, under the powers of the authority, Article 3, is listed as they have the power to incur debts, liabilities, and obligations. And I'm assuming that's debts, liabilities, and obligations beyond the established funding stream. Otherwise, why would they have that in there? As we move forward, and I note that it's specified in here that specific bylaws will be prepared and adopted. With the Golden Sierra Job Training Agency upon which I sit, we've just, we're still dealing with what happens to existing liabilities of the JPA if a member pulls out during the time that those liabilities have been incurred. And nothing in this agreement, it speaks to distribution of funds, meaning stuff that's coming in if somebody pulls out, but it doesn't speak to what if a liability is created and somebody pulls out after that liability is created, and does that liability go with them in a proportionate share? So I just want to make sure that as we move forward with this, we express that concern that that be addressed in whatever founding document ultimately gets decided on by way of the bylaws of the organization.
Makes total sense.
That any liabilities be also, they ride with the entity if they, you know, leaving the entity does not absolve them of that liability.
Correct.
Okay?
Makes absolute sense.
Okay. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Roll call.
Euler?
Aye.
Wigan?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Rockcom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good catch. All right, we're ahead of our time here, so let's do... What's that?
We're always ahead of our time. This is Placer County.
Rocky. Don't encourage me. Yeah.
Thank you for being inclusive. Thank you for not eliminating maybe just the Placer High Road.
Leadership of Placer High.
Item number five. Item number five.
Well, good morning. Jim Bogan, Purchasing Manager. Item 5A is requesting your board's approval to renew competitively awarded blanket purchase orders for facility services and public works road maintenance with Taykert Construction for annual paving services in the maximum aggregate amount of $350,000. Despite a small increase in the prevailing wage over the last contract, Taykert's pricing is still 12 percent lower than the next low bidder on the previous contract and on the bid. Last year's contract total was $465,000. For the coming year, the departments request your approval of paving services in the maximum aggregate amount of $350,000. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Any...Jennifer?
Jim, thank you. I did have one question referring to what I discussed a little bit earlier about Meta Vista. There is obviously some heightened sensitivity in Meta Vista about asphalt and where it's coming from. Where do we expect to get our asphalt in this project from?
Well, from the Tahoe area, it would come from Martis Valley primarily. They also have plants all over the Sacramento Valley, but for up there, that's the most logical place for them to take the asphalt.
Out of the Sacramento Valley, or?
No, out of Martis Valley.
Okay.
Hi, Kevin Tabor, Public Works Road Maintenance. I'll add in for this contract, the way it's structured is the department actually buys the material, and our current vendor is Vulcan Aggregates. So we buy the material, and then Taykert just places it under that separate contract. So it'd actually be coming from Roseville in this instance.
Great. Thank you very much, Kevin. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions on this item? Have a motion?
Move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number six, Jennifer Merchant. I bet you it was a little chilly up in Tahoe this morning, wasn't it?
Yeah, a little bit. They were making snow at boreal, so cold enough for that. Looking forward to winter, I suppose. So, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jennifer Merchant with the executive office. I'm here this morning with a contract with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association for your consideration. The agreement with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association before you today would allocate $3.6 million in transient occupancy tax funds for the promotion of tourism and visitor-serving capital projects and transit operations in the North Lake Tahoe region. The primary task of the resort association is to promote tourism and provide guidance to the Board of Supervisors on infrastructure projects and visitor support service expenditures. In an effort to strengthen elements of the resort association agreement, a number of changes to the contract have been added this year. The most significant contract modification is the allocation of TOT funds in order to maintain base level county services in Tahoe despite ongoing countywide fiscal challenges. In addition to Tahoe TOT funds typically allocated to county departments for operations and maintenance of visitor-serving facilities, $500,000 in TOT funds will be allocated this year to maintain base Tahoe dental clinic, TART bus, and public safety services. Additionally, we have come to agreement that fiscal year '08-'09 Tahoe TOT fund balance and '09-10 funds allocated to the infrastructure account will be held in reserve for possible allocation to fund other essential Tahoe services such as snow removal and transit in the event of further state budget cuts. And in order to improve planning and coordination of various county and external agency capital projects in the Lake Tahoe area, the contract also includes agreement on joint preparation of a comprehensive planning document to identify capital project needs and funding sources for the Tahoe area. And this year's contract also allows flexibility and modest growth in the resort association's marketing programs targeted toward defending and maintaining the important Sacramento and Bay Area drive-up markets. And it again allocates TOT revenue to Placer County's film office operations. Specific capital projects to be considered for funding under this contract include the Kings Beach Commercial Core Project, Tahoe City Transit Center, Tahoe Vista Recreation Area, which you will hear next on today's agenda, Lakeside Multipurpose Trail, and the Squaw Valley Olympic Ski Heritage Museum. These funding allocations are recommended for your board following a public resort association committee and board review and recommendation process. In order to provide these services as outlined, the contract budget allocates funds to the following resource categories: $1.9 million for marketing, $1 million for visitor support and transportation, and $700,000 for capital improvements. And finally, I wanted to call your attention to Steve DeShara, the president and CEO of the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. He's here in the audience today and would like to provide some comment on our recommendation. Happy also to answer any questions of the board.
Yeah, I guess just for clarification purposes, we are discussing 6B at this point, not 6A, right? Item 6B?
We're doing B.
That we're doing the contract?
Yeah, the 3.6, that's 6B, not 6A.
Oh, did I do that backwards? I'm sorry. Yes, we are.
Okay.
Apparently, thank you for that clarification.
Your comment regarding the fund balance held, the staff report says additionally, "A significant portion of the '08-'09 fund balance and all capital funds allocated to the infrastructure account will be held in reserve." What was that fund balance and what is a significant portion of that fund balance?
The total fund balance was $690,000. $150,000 is going to fund marketing services for North Lake Tahoe, so that's going to come off the top before it's allocated to the different departments. $50,000 is going to go to the infrastructure fund because we agreed to provide $50,000 in upfront infrastructure kind of flexible funds from that account to marketing so they could start using that money right away at the beginning of the fiscal year. And then $102,000 will go to fund base TART operations.
So 388 left.
Right.
Okay. All right. That's all I got. Thank you.
Any other questions? Does Steve want to address this before we vote on this item?
Yes, sir, please.
We might decide not to give you the money, but...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And members of the board and staff, ladies and gentlemen, Steve DeShara, President and CEO of the Resort Association. As folks are aware, I believe we are a community-based nonprofit corporation, and we're proud to be a strategic partner with Placer County and eastern Placer County. As Jennifer has indicated, we recently completed contract negotiations with the CEO's office, and the contract is before you today. The chairman of our board, Alex Morolatos, and our executive board members were the lead in our negotiations, supported by the senior staff at the resort association. Alex is on travel this week, and he asked me to read a brief statement if I could, Mr. Chairman, just so that we could wrap up the process that we've had. So this is from our chairman, Mr. Morolatos. Chairman Rockcom, members of the Board of Supervisors, and County Executive Officer Miller, as Chair of the Resort Association Board, I would like to acknowledge the successful completion of our negotiations for fiscal year '09-10 and the contract therein. My signature on this contract that's before you today for consideration is with the full authority and approval of the Resort Association Board of Directors. I would specifically like to acknowledge and thank County Executive Officer Tom Miller and Principal Management Analyst and Tahoe Manager Jennifer Merchant for their efforts since back in late July to bring this process to a successful conclusion. I'd also like to thank all of the members of the Board of Supervisors and your time that you took over this past year to listen, to meet with the executive board and representatives of the Resort Association, and provide us with your insights and guidance that were appropriate to this process. We believe that we are taking positive steps toward building a better, stronger, and more interactive and productive relationship with the goals of achieving greater transparency as well as clarity in our future funding strategies. The current economic climate is a challenge for all of us, but we remain optimistic, in large part based on the manner in which we have invested the TOT funds that you have entrusted in us over the years, that we've done with you in partnership consistent with the adopted North Lake Tahoe Tourism and Community Investment Master Plan adopted by our board and adopted by the County Board of Supervisors. With your guidance and support, we are proud of the organization that we have developed that provides for meaningful input from local participation in our community and promotes the partnerships necessary for effective investments. We're enthusiastic about the opportunities that the future holds for sustained economic success in eastern Placer County, a region that you know generates more than 95 percent of the county's TOT revenue, along with other important county revenues. We recognize and appreciate that sustained success can only be achieved through effective collaboration. We're committed to keeping your board better aware of our major accomplishments and to seek your ongoing support and guidance as appropriate as we move forward. Sincerely, Alex Morolatos, Chair, Resort Association Board of Directors. And just a couple of things to add to Alex's comments. We recognize that this past year has been one of extraordinary economic and financial challenge. In terms of our marketing responsibilities, and Jennifer touched on this, by moving quickly, we've been able to deal with some of the changes in consumer travel that have been largely driven by the economy. For instance, protecting our drive market in northern California, moving revenues to that. So that as a result, we believe of our work and work of our partners, last year in '07-'08, that was a record year for TOT collections in eastern Placer County, almost $9 million. And this year, with all of the challenges, the TOT collections were just under 8 percent below that. So I think matters could have been worse had we not acted with your assistance and the assistance of our partners to try to deal with those issues. Also, in the process of discussing various issues during the negotiations, we were asked to take a look at our total infrastructure investments going back to the start of the resort association in 1996. And we looked at the items, the infrastructure projects that we recommended that this board approved, the county allocated money to, and we leveraged about $15.5 million worth of TOT for a total project investment with many partners of about $140 million. We think that's outstanding success and leveraging opportunities, taking funds, and making them into larger investments, again with the help of many partners. And we thank this board and the county staff for your support of this going forward. We appreciate very much the opportunity to work with the county in this strategic and successful partnership. So thank you for the opportunity to address you here at the end of this process and encourage you to take positive action on the contract.
Thank you. Any other comments? Jennifer?
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Tom and Jennifer, Alex, Steve, Rich, everyone who worked on this contract so that we do have the opportunity to have a signed agreed upon contract in front of us today. I think it's absolutely crucial, the work that the resort association does in conjunction with the county and other local agencies in the area. Getting back to the question you raised, Kirk, a little bit earlier, I was very concerned about making sure that we do have some money set aside should the state come back and take our gas tax money. As we all know, if you don't plow the roads, no one can get to the resorts, and they can't go up there and buy second homes and gas and shop and, you know, do all those things that we really do rely upon at the east end of the county. So I really want to thank the resort association, Alex Morolatos specifically, for working diligently to take that agreement to his board and be able to bring us something today that I think we can all be, if not over the moon about, at least satisfied with, and then move on for a, you know, to continue our productive relationship for the years to come.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Steve.
Want to make a motion?
Move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And we'll take up A. Finish that, or is it?
And we'll go back to A. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Okay, the item before you is an infrastructure project. As I mentioned, the Tahoe Vista Recreation Area that was recommended through the resort association's typical process. The infrastructure committee had unanimous recommendation to their board of directors, which unanimously recommended to our department that we bring this before you today. The expenditure is $500,000 in resort association infrastructure funds that would support a share of final planning and construction of recreational amenities and support facilities as part of Phase 2 of the North Tahoe Public Utility District's Tahoe Vista Recreation Area. The project, I'm sure you've seen Phase 1 of the project, in fact, I believe some of you attended an event at it last summer, is located on the northwest corner of Highway 28 and National Avenue in Tahoe Vista, and includes vehicle and boat trailer parking to support the adjacent lakeside boat launch and beach access facility, as well as bike trail staging, bus pullout and shelter, and site preparation for a concession and warming facility and restrooms. And if approved, the $500,000 allocation would represent a $1 million Placer County commitment to this project and leverages a total of $13 million in other agency partner funding for land acquisition and site improvements. The project is consistent with the Tourism and Community Investment Master Plan, and your board's approval was recommended by the Resort Association Board. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions? Have a motion?
Move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Peter, we'll do this quick.
Good morning. Peter Kratz with Public Works here for item 7, which relates to the Douglas Boulevard Sidewalk Improvement Project, award of construction contract number 1056. This project is, Public Works is proposing new sidewalks and landscaping on Douglas Boulevard between Sierra College Boulevard and Auburn Folsom Road. Currently, there are discontinuous sections of sidewalks, and the project will provide continuity by connecting those sidewalks and increase pedestrian safety and mobility. The project has cleared state and federal environmental permitting requirements with respect to SEQA and NEPA. Eleven bidders responded through the county's competitive bid process. The low bid was determined to be non-responsive, and therefore, the second low bidder became the low responsible bidder and is recommended for award today, which submitted a base bid of $461,140.40. Project construction is to be funded through a combination of federal and road fund sources. And so, in conclusion, we're asking your board to adopt a resolution with county council and risk management review and approval, the contract for the project to the lowest responsible bidder in an amount up to $465,000, and authorize the chairman to execute the contract on behalf of Placer County. And also, we're asking your board to authorize the Director of Public Works to approve contract change orders up to 10 percent of the contract amount. So with that, we recommend approval of this item by your board, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Kirk?
Yeah, a couple of questions. There's already work going on out there. I'm guessing that's all just utility-related?
Right, and...
Within the proposed project areas?
Yes.
Because there are already guys out there doing stuff.
Right, with the landscaping, and I don't believe there's any tree removal required for this, but...
Exactly. And then, if memory serves, the grant that we received was about $1 million for this work. Looks like we're only going to be using about half of that. Does the other half have to go back, or can it be utilized elsewhere?
I need to check into that.
And Ken is sleeping to his feet.
He might be on the...
Running right up here and answer that question.
Okay.
Yes.
He's going to tell you no.
Could have done that from his chair.
Ken Graham, Department of Public Works. Yes, we did get a congestion mitigation and air quality grant for this project, close to $1 million, $900,000. The additional funds, we're going to be trying to see if we can reallocate that to other pedestrian way improvements. We've got another project we're trying to do on Sierra College, and maybe even go further in directions along Douglas. Whether we'll be able to do it is a matter as we work through the federal process, but we definitely want to try to not have those dollars go back to the greater pot. But there is not a guarantee. It is up to FHWA and Caltrans.
It is up to FHWA and Caltrans in the end to make that determination.
That Sierra College part is what I was thinking of. Also, as you know, we have some improvements on Eureka where it approaches Sierra College from the, from heading, from the east headed west. On the north side, a lot of pedestrian traffic, kids primarily walking...
From the high school.
To the high school, exactly.
Absolutely.
And that area is unfinished, and so, that might be an area we'll look at this as well.
Yep.
Thank you.
I need some sidewalks over in Dry Creek, so if you...
Go get your...
North Auburn, Jennifer.
Oh, I think...
Kings Beach.
Yes. I think we spent plenty in both of those areas recently.
We have a motion.
Move approval.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right, we'll take up the 9:30 item.
Barbara Pasanda with the Administrative Services Manager with the Sheriff's Department, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Item One is to request a public hearing for the citizens' options for public safety. This hearing is to be held separate apart from the regular budget process, and it's to approve the expenditures for the upcoming year. The expenditures planned to be received this year are for the corrections and district attorney each of $68,481. And additionally, we have about $64,582. That is carryover for corrections for a total expenditure plan of $133,063. Frontline law enforcement is for $112,041. For the district attorney, these funds will be used for, to offset some costs for an attorney. For the correction staff, these funds are used for equipment and to offset special projects in maintenance for the jail. For the frontline law enforcement, these funds are used to offset costs for the 290 registrant detective, and those other costs are offset from other grant funds, and there is no impact to the general fund. Part of these funds, you may realize, last year were shifted from the general fund to vehicle license fees. The reduction in these fees this year have related to that. They project that these fees will come in lower than originally anticipated. In addition, there is an oversight committee that reviews these expenditures for all the county and city recipients, and they have met just previous to this meeting and approved those expenditures as well. At this time, we ask you to open the public hearing for any comments.
All right, I will open up the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak to this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board.
You have approval, Staff, for revision?
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're right on schedule.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, briefly, as Janine's coming up. I mentioned earlier the LEDPA letter that we received from EPA and we're expecting from Army Corps on Alternative Five of the Parkway. Mr. McKeever is in the audience here today, and I need to recognize his role in our successful negotiation with those agencies. Mike, through SACOG, has been very active in bringing the agencies in to get them to understand that if we're going to be successful as a region in developing out the blueprint, projects like this, and dare I say, negotiating in good faith with us over projects like this, is a key ingredient to our successful implementation of this blueprint, which is seen by folks at the federal level as a good way to do business. And so, I wanted to recognize Mike and the role that he played in our successful LEDPA determination on Alternative Fives. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Sorry about taking your time for that, but he was here.
That way, Steve already introduced him, so you just run him up there and he... Go ahead, Steve.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'm Janine Windushausen, Placer County Treasure Tax Collector, and you have before you today an item regarding AB 811. And in your materials, you have, in your board packet, you actually have feasibility, study, and business plan, and then also other program materials in a binder that's been left for you. I would like to begin with giving you a PowerPoint presentation about the program, and then answering your questions, and there's a number of people that I know are interested in speaking about the program. In the Treasure Tax Collector's Office, we've developed a proposal, and we've actually gone quite a ways into developing a program for AB 811. And I want to introduce the program as Placer Empower. We kind of, we had a little bit of fun with a logo and a name, and Empower stands for Money for Property Owner Water and Energy Retrofitting. So, what is AB 811? AB 811 authorizes specifically cities and counties to develop what are essentially loan programs for property owners to make improvements for water and energy conservation and also energy generation, and then those loans can be paid back on the property tax bill. So, I'd like to talk to you about the program benefits, the main components of the program, who the stakeholders are, and who in the county that we will need support from in order to have a successful program, what's going on in other jurisdictions in the state of California, and what exactly the proposal status is, and any next steps should the Board decide to go ahead and authorize a program for Placer County. The program benefits, I think one of the chief ones in the current economy is an local economic catalyst. The proposal is for a $33 million program, which would go directly into our local economy. And while there aren't any specific studies on what a program would mean economically to Placer County, generally accepted economic multipliers are for every dollar invested, it will turn over at least one and likely up to three times. The program would create green jobs out of one of the hardest-hit economic sectors in this downturn, the construction trades. There will be increased building permit activity. There is an opportunity through this program to obtain American Reinvestment and Recovery Act dollars and California Energy Commission grant funding. There is significant potential for AB 32 compliance and to accrue carbon credits towards AB 32 compliance. It is very likely that the countywide carbon footprint and the reduction of greenhouse gases will be achieved. And for property owners specifically, it means reduced energy and water utility costs. The financing terms in the program will be over five, 10, or 20 years, and it would also leverage property owner rebates and tax credits, so that if property owners otherwise without this program would not be able to do this kind of energy retrofitting, they would not be able to take care, take advantage of those rebates and tax credits. And then, ultimately, in financing the program, there's maybe the opportunity to do a public debt offering, and green investment is very, is in demand right now with bond buyers. There are entire funds now on Wall Street dedicated solely to green investment. So, I would like to walk you through the property owner side of the program first and the application process. It will include screening of the property owner. They need to meet certain qualifications. They need to apply for improvements which are authorized through the program. One of the mantras of the program will be reduce before you produce. In other words, reduce your energy consumption before you start generating energy through, like, solar photovoltaic. That way, you ensure that the property owner isn't oversizing their energy generation because they don't have an energy-efficient property to begin with. It will require review of bids and contracts, legal disclosures and fair lending notices. For business properties, we will need to review certain organizational documents just to ensure that the agents acting on behalf of the property owner are authorized to do what they are doing and enter into the assessment contract. There will be an assessment contract, and there will be permit approvals. All existing permit requirements apply. Nothing more, nothing less in terms of the program. The only additional requirement would be if an improvement does not require a permit, we will require an inspection just to make sure that the improvements have been completed before we advance the funding. We will need evidence of costs such as invoices, purchase orders, contracts, those kinds of documents, and then there is the funding and the filing of the lien on the property in order to collect on the property tax bill. The property owner qualifications, they must be the legal owner of the property. They need to be current on their mortgages. They cannot be in bankruptcy or recently out of bankruptcy. No involuntary liens, such as mechanic liens, can exist on the property. The Empower assessment cannot be more than 10% of the assessed value, and that's an initial guideline. We know that the assessor has been reducing property values significantly, so that will be kind of a quick and dirty threshold. If it meets that, that's a conservative parameter. If it doesn't, then we're going to have to do some more documentation and research in order to make sure that there's a reasonable relationship between the improvements being proposed and the property. And then, the property must be within Placer County. There is the potential to include other jurisdictions, and I have been contacted by representatives from Nevada County who are interested in a program there, and after we get our program up and running, it may be feasible for both of us to partner on a program that could expand to other jurisdictions. The qualified improvements would be, would include energy efficiency and renewables such as heating and air conditioning systems, geo-exchange heat pumps, high-efficiency windows, insulation, doors, roof coating, photovoltaic, solar, fuel cells, tankless water heaters, and then also the water conservation measures. And then, custom measures, particularly, I think where this would apply, is for commercial and industrial and agricultural properties who might be interested in doing something outside of what would be common for a residential property owner. The assessment cannot be less than $2,500. As I said, it's available for all property types. The assessment lien will be put onto the property tax roll, and the repayment will be collected twice a year. Most improvements under Revenue and Taxation Code Section 73 are exempt from reassessment to the current property owner. At a later date, if the property is sold, then the value of the improvements will be included in the new value for the new property owner. So, it will increase the assessment roll over time, nothing immediate there, but it is a relief or no penalty in terms of a reassessment to the current property owner. So, the, if the property is subsequently sold, the lien stays with the property, will be looking to finance the improvements over their useful life or for a shorter period of time should the property owner request that, which means that with the lien staying on the property, that the owner who installed it would get the benefit and pay for it over their ownership time period. A subsequent owner would then pay for their portion of the useful life of the property improvements. The financing, as I mentioned, is over five, 10, or 20 years. There is not a credit score impact to the property owner. We're not going to be doing credit checks because of the way that the lien is secured by the property and stays with the property. We will also include provisions for prepayment of the assessment if a property owner decides to do that. Our constraint on that is if we do a public offering, if we package these assessments later and sell them to Wall Street, then the bond buyers like to have an investment stay for the term of the investment. If they have an investment they like, they don't want it paid off early. So, there may be some constraints such as a prepayment penalty or only certain periods of time which the prepayment will, can occur. We'll try to keep that as flexible as possible, so we're currently researching our alternatives on that. The rate will be determined ultimately based on cost recovery, return to investors, but we want to make sure that it's competitive. There are three other programs operating in the state of California. All of them are charging a 7% rate of interest with very good success in their programs. If we can sharpen our pencil and bring that rate down for our property owners, we'll try to do that. There's currently federal legislation that would make a public offering tax exempt that's pending in Congress, and so, if that goes through before we do any public offering associated with this, that will also help bring down the rate. The program costs would be operated through an enterprise fund. The program is proposed, provides for complete cost recovery. The initial budget for the first year is estimated at $1.2 million. And again, I want to mention the possibility for grant funding. To the extent that we can get grant funding to lower our administrative costs, then we can lower that rate to the property owners as well. So, we will be pursuing grant funding. So, how do we finance this? Where do we come up with this $33 million? I'm going to start actually right here with the Placer County Public Financing Authority, which your Board sits as the Board for. In order for the Treasurer's Investment Pool to provide funding, the Treasurer needs some kind of an investment vehicle through which to advance funding. So, the financing structure would call for the Placer County Public Financing Authority to issue debt on a line-of-credit basis. That debt would be purchased by the Treasurer's Investment Pool on an as-needed basis, so not all $33 million at one time, but as needed, so again, that we keep our interest rate costs lower. The Public Financing Authority would in turn enter into a lending agreement with the county through their Placer Empower program, and then that program would advance the money to the property owners who would pay back the assessments on the property tax bill. When those collections are made, it will go back to the program and be used to repay the Financing Authority, who will then use that money to pay the debt service. At a later date, we would look at bundling that, those assessments in this investment and offering it to Wall Street. When we have about, somewhere between $10 and $20 million in assessments outstanding, we would take the proceeds of the sale of that investment from Wall Street to bring back into the program, and that's how we would perpetuate and provide additional funding for the program over time based on the demand that we're receiving. Internally, Treasury Tax Collector's Office would be the lead. We will need support from the Auditor's Office for initial startup on, in terms of getting it on the tax roll, and then on an annual basis. We currently do that on, with other assessments throughout the county, so it's not a new duty, there are not new duties related to this for the auditor or the Treasurer Tax Collector. There will be an incremental increase in workload associated with it. Particularly before, prior to actually going live with the program, we're going to need support from County Council in reviewing all of the program documents to make sure that they're legally sound. And we also would like input and, from Community Development and Resource Agency, their Building Department, in reviewing the proposed list of authorized improvements and refining that list, and then also look for any opportunities to work with economic development and redevelopment to increase the economic benefit of this program. So, we've identified a number of stakeholders, contractors in the building trades, banks and mortgage lenders, the realtors and title companies, all of our cities and town, our utility companies, both Placer County Water Agency and NID, and then in terms of electric service providers, PG&E, Roseville Electric, Sierra Pacific is our provider in the high country, and SMUD has some smaller service areas right on the county line in the Roseville area. And then, as I mentioned before, the neighboring jurisdictions who may be interested in partnering with us at a later date. I want to talk about the three other programs that are operating under AB 811 in the state of California. Palm Desert, Berkeley, and Sonoma all have programs. Palm Desert and Berkeley implemented programs just over a year ago, and Sonoma County kicked off their program at the end... off their program at the end of March of this year. In Sonoma County, that model is unique. It's the first county program. And I just want to mention that there are a number of other jurisdictions. Sacramento City and County is looking at a program. The city of Davis is looking at a program. The counties of Ventura and Santa Barbara are moving forward on programs. Los Angeles County is exploring a program. ABAG is looking at a regional program in the Bay Area. So what we've learned from the three other operating programs is that there is a high demand and an overwhelming response. And to prepare for that response, Palm Desert sold out $2.5 million in three weeks. Sonoma County averages $600,000 to $800,000. That average since inception has actually moved up. It's approaching $1 million a week, $900,000 a week. And the other lesson learned is to have good communication and good disclosures throughout the process with the property owners. My staff went down to Sonoma County again last week and went through what they call their storefront, where the property owners actually come in. And they thought it was really funny to send me a little email with a clip from the old Jaws movie where the captain looks over the edge and sees the shark and goes back in on the boat and says to his skipper, "I think we need a bigger boat." And based on the response that they're getting in Sonoma County. And so in Sonoma County, it was the first program that was truly structured for a future public debt offering. It was the first multi-jurisdictional program. All of their cities, I think they have, I can't remember, it's seven or nine cities, but all of their cities are participating in the program. And it was the first program to include water efficiency. And the justification for that is that it's estimated that fully one-third of energy costs are spent on the delivery of water. And so this is the Sonoma County program. And they started their program the last week of March. This chart details their phone inquiries, their web inquiries, walk-in, the number of applications received. And you can see that there is an upward trend in the number of applications that they're receiving, how many that they have approved. They have funded almost 250 applications as of last Friday, actually approved. And then in terms of dollar volume, and these columns do not correlate because when applications don't proceed through the process all at the same rate, but you can see that their average now, their weekly average is 900,000. And that includes from when the program first started and the volumes were lower. And so they have actually funded almost $10 million in the last six months on their program. And it's really taking off. They included in their property tax bills an insert so that they got all of their homeowners. That's going to be very powerful for us, particularly with the properties up in the Tahoe area where those property owners might not otherwise hear about it because they're second homes and they live in Sacramento in the Bay Area and Southern California. So what have we done to date? We have developed program guidelines and a financing plan. We have most of the forms that we're going to need in the program. Those are drafts of those are included in your binder. And we have developed the application process procedures. We have a budget, an organization chart. We have drafted web pages. And the funding is currently available in the county treasurer's investment pool. Next steps would be a proposed board meeting on November 3rd to pass a resolution of intention, establish the enterprise fund, approve a budget, and approve the staffing plan. And then on December 8th, a public hearing to authorize the program formation, and then a resolution to implement that and approve the initial financing documents. In concert with that, there's a number of other things that have to be addressed. And the technical review of the qualified improvements by the utility companies, by SEDRA. We need to meet and collaborate with our stakeholders. We want to look for any opportunity to increase economic multipliers through this program. And so that's part of what we're looking to do when we meet with those stakeholders. We will need to execute cooperative agreements with the participating cities. You have an example of that in your packet. Basically, what that agreement says is that they're interested in participating in the program, that they will provide the permitting resources, they would charge their applicable permitting fees, and that they will help us market the program by putting links on their website, some of those types of things. We need to do a survey of property owners to make sure that we're tailoring the program to meet their interests. And then develop and implement an advertising and marketing program. And then as far as actual implementation, we would need to staff up, train the staff, and also prepare a facility from which we're going to operate the program. And then move towards a grand opening. And then, once we're up and running, look at potential for expansion with neighboring jurisdictions, as I mentioned, particularly in Nevada County, there is interest. And so with that, I will open it up for your questions, comments. And I know that there are a number of folks in the audience that would like to speak.
Robert?
Jane, first of all, compliments to you and staff for great work and good review and hooking onto an innovative idea. And as usual, the devil is in the details on those kinds of cutting-edge innovative ideas.
Of course.
So first question I have is, am I correct in thinking that the first phase of financing whereby we essentially are taking the monies from the treasury investment pool and lending it in a line of credit, is that similar to the financing that we did with the FERC licensing effort?
Yes, in terms of the line of credit structure in order to minimize the financing costs.
So is it correct, then, that the worst case in terms of exposure, which I think would be very low to begin with in that this can be assessed on the property tax roll, but with the second phase where we would package these and potentially sell them on Wall Street, if that didn't work, it doesn't sound to me like there'd be much exposure. And connected to that, is there, what is the advantage to selling these, just a more quick recovery of that cash flow back to the?
If a bond offering, a public debt offering, became infeasible, didn't appear feasible, it would mean that we would just hold the investment in the treasurer's investment pool.
Would just be a slower recapture of the investment.
Well, no, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have an effect on the cost recovery per se. It just means that we wouldn't have additional funds to put into the program to make available for property owners. The 33, how I arrived at the 33 million is that's a commitment of 3% of the treasury. We have about $1 billion in the treasury. And so it's a commitment of about 3% just to maintain, you know, from a portfolio management standpoint, our diversification. And so we would want to look to a public debt offering to try to perpetuate the program.
And then, Kurt, investment return in the overall treasury is about 3%, correct? So in the?
A little less than that now, actually.
Yeah. We will essentially be building a staff to get into the lending business and dealing with that issue. Thus, the cost that potentially could be, from other experiences, I guess, about as high as 7%. But that appears to be incredibly appealing to the market because of Sonoma's experience is similar to?
I think Sonoma is a very good indicator. And as I said, if there's any opportunity for us to lower that interest rate, we will. So using 7%, a portion of that is a return for the investor. The other portion is for cost recovery.
A return to the taxpayers also in terms of the investment pool.
Right, exactly.
Thank you.
Right. Kurt?
Yes, several thoughts. First, following on what Robert just mentioned in terms of the costs associated with getting into the lending business. As we've discussed, there are a number of entities out there right now that are already engaged in commercial and residential lending. And there may very well be opportunities to simply contract with those kinds of entities for application processing, certain program administration parts, including all of the reporting that's required and all the rest, because there are people that are out there. There are companies that are out there, some of them headquartered right here in Placer County, that are in the business of essentially lending other people's money. So that exists, and we may have an opportunity to contract as opposed to create it ourselves.
Let me comment on that. AB-811 funding can only be provided to developed properties, so it cannot be used on new development. What that means is that there is a finite stock out there. And so at some point, there is a saturation point for this program. I don't know where that is. I don't know where it is in terms of dollars. I don't know where it is in terms of, you know, is it three years from now, is it five years from now? The newer home market is going to have most of these efficiencies already, the stock that has been built more recently. So there's a saturation point. So I think we don't want to do things that set this program up as a permanent, ongoing program. So contracting out, hiring staff on an extra-help basis, those are the things that we're looking at.
Couple of additional thoughts since we last met and discussed this. When I was with the Electric and Gas Industries Association, we administered a high-efficiency HVAC loan buy-down program where we leveraged about $3.5 million worth of CPUC funds into almost $40 million worth of actual high-efficiency HVAC installations by buying down the interest rate. One of the things that was very important in that process was doing business with contractors that had met some level of screening and certification, but we didn't want to do that ourselves. So we contracted with the League of California Homeowners. The League of California Homeowners, what they do is they quote-unquote certify that a contractor has all required licenses to perform the work that they're proposing to perform, all required insurances, workers' compensation, all the rest. They clean Better Business Bureau reports. So they, and it's a fairly nominal fee for the contractor, things like $35, $40 bucks for the contractor to get their League of California homeowner's certification. I think one of the reasons that's important is if a contractor comes in, installs through this program, and for whatever reason the homeowner isn't satisfied, and they don't get relief through that contractor, they will be contacting the county. They will be coming to contacting the county to say, "I'm not happy with this loan because of this contractor, and we dealt with it extensively."
The way that the program is proposed and the way that it's working in Sonoma County is that what we're looking for is a reasonable value of the improvements to the property. So that we're not financing, say, an oversized photovoltaic system, or the house has seven windows, but somebody's applying for nine windows, you know, those types of things. When the property owner is responsible for doing their own contracting, we will certainly provide them with resources in terms of the contractor's licensing board links, various things like that. When they come to us, they're going to provide evidence of cost, which we're going to use to base the funding on, and we're going to pay the property owner. I really, my feeling right now, and we can pursue this more and look at this, because certainly to the extent feasible, we want to provide consumer protection. But I have been trying to keep us away from the relationship between the property owner and the contractor, that that is, that's between them, and we're not giving any warranties or approval as to the condition of the work, the satisfaction of the work, those types of things. But hearing what you said, we'll definitely look at that and see how it may or may not be feasibly incorporated. So I think further discussion is warranted based on your comments.
Okay. Also, you mentioned dollars for advertising and marketing. What you might want to consider is if you're going to put money there, do it in a cooperative advertising format, work with existing high-efficiency HVAC installers, solar photovoltaic installers, and say, "We're going to make a few dollars available for you. If you are buying advertising, we will partner with, you know, make certain dollars available if your advertising includes this messaging about our program." And it was a very effective way for us to leverage a very small number of advertising and marketing dollars for our program into advertising that they're already doing. What we found was simply the availability of, under our program, was a 3.9% interest rate for high-efficiency HVAC. Simply the availability of that financing, the contractors started using that. I guarantee you, you will see photovoltaic installers start using the availability of this financing in their advertising without you having to spend a penny.
In fact, that's the experience in Sonoma County, and that's where a lot of our marketing effort and outreach effort will be focused, is on the contractors, installers, and suppliers. We've been able to take advantage of a lot of lessons learned from Sonoma County. And one of the things that they did was they had a breakfast kickoff for contractors. They had 300 attend, where they gave them information about the program. And that's what they're finding out, is that they could get a broader distribution on their advertising by going through their contractors, and then their contractors use it in promoting their services. So I think there's also an element in providing inserts into the property tax bill, the potential to have discussions with the city of Roseville for inserts in their utility bills. So I think it's a multi-pronged approach, but definitely that has been the experience in Sonoma County, is that there is leverage in working with the building trades.
Right. And it is, it's almost a contractor education and training effort about the program and how you want it administered.
That's it.
Because what you'll find, I mean, I like what you're saying in terms of how you set it up, where you're funding the property owner and everything runs to them. Rest assured, the vast majority of the information the property owner receives about this program and its application to them and their scenario is going to come through the contractor.
I'm already getting the calls after the Business Journal article.
Right.
From the contracting community.
Right. And hence, my previous point about making sure that we're working with contractors that do good business over the long term.
And we have identified them as some of our stakeholders.
And then just a quick clarification. The financing is for the gross contract amount, not net of rebates, net of federal tax credit and all the rest. If my system is a $30,000 system, but I've got a 30% federal tax credit, and then I've got a rebate coming back from the state, you're going to finance the $30,000 in the tax credit and the rebate.
Unless the credit or the rebate is immediate. In other words, you know, can be made a part of the process. If it can't, no, we're not going to net that out.
Okay. So what this does for a homeowner, from a cash flow standpoint, it puts a property, it doesn't have to be a home, it has to be a commercial applies as well, it puts them in a tremendous position from a cash flow standpoint, because now you're taking a utility bill, which they're used to paying monthly, properly sized with adequate energy efficiency, you're eliminating that utility bill from their monthly cash flow obligation.
Or reducing it.
Well, you're creating a twice-a-year obligation on their tax credit, but from the monthly cash flow standpoint, you're giving them the opportunity to put the rebate in their pocket. You're giving them the opportunity to take advantage of the tax credit, most of which will happen prior to them paying you the first payment. So from just purely a cash flow standpoint, it's a huge win for the property owners.
Right. And in the case of a property owner that has an impound account, they would pay it monthly, their impound account amount would increase monthly.
Okay, thank you.
You want Mike to make his comments before he has to leave?
Yeah, he needs to scoot, so.
Better go make some money for SECOG now.
Thank you very much for the courtesy, Chair Rockholm and Director, SECOG Director Rockholm. I'll be very brief. It seems like it's not very many mornings that you wake up these days and you have some good news on your calendar. And as Supervisor Euler indicated, this is, what you're talking about today is not just a little bit of good news, it's big good news. So I'm really just here to see if I can't get a little on- So, I'm really just here to see if I can't get a little on me to take back down the hill with me. I do want to congratulate Ms. Windushausen, your Treasurer-Tax Collector, and encourage you, Godspeed, in working out the details and moving ahead with this. I do want you to know that many of the members on SACOG's Board have asked staff to bring them information about this option for several months now. There's a great deal of interest out and about, and I've already warned Janine that if you decide to proceed with this, we'll be begging her to come down the hill and talk with the SACOG Board members, so that everybody in the region can benefit from your leadership and what you're doing here. You know, on the tangible benefits side, there is understandably a lot of attention to the residential and the commercial people who will take advantage of this. But I want to call your attention to a couple more that are on the list that may not seem as prominent. One is just the water conservation issue generally. Certainly, there are energy benefits from water conservation, but I'm sure, as you're well aware, there's a big deal going on in the California Legislature in regard to several water bills. And there's also increasingly federal interest in our Senator Feinstein and getting active in this water area. And so, there's going to be a lot of attention on water conservation and water efficiency. And so, the more, like so many things, that we can do to be proactive and out front of that issue at the local level, it benefits our citizens and it increases our sort of soft capital leverage, if you will, in terms of working with the state and federal politicians and regulators on reasonable approaches. And so, you know, a good, I always like to play offense, and so, this is a really good offensive maneuver in the water conservation field. And the other thing I want to call out is the agricultural area. We've spent a lot of time in the last year, a year and a half, looking at the economics of our agricultural economy in this region, which is over a billion-dollar-a-year-value economy. And even more than most business owners, the farmers operate on a really tight margin these days. And they're at risk of having increased regulations in terms of water and energy efficiency. And so, the economic assistance to your farm economy, I think, is going to be a big, big deal in terms of keeping them viable and keeping them around for the long term. So, I'm just here to say congratulations and thank you very much for the acknowledgement on the Placer County Parkway. All we're trying to do is support our members a little bit in the good work and leadership that you're exhibiting, and I am glad there's good news there. I think there's good news coming in another month or so, maybe on your PCCP endeavors too. So, maybe I'll come back and get a little more on me then. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming up and, Janine, do you want me to just open it up now to anybody that?
Unless the board has any other questions.
Jennifer, it looks like, has a question for you.
I do. Janine, thank you so much. I just really have to say, you took this up such a brief time ago, and you have done such incredible work in putting this together in a comprehensible package for all of us. You and I have been discussing this over the last couple of months, because as you know, I'm a big proponent of AB 811, and was just so excited to hear that this was something you wanted to move forward on. I do have a number of questions and just some suggestions. One of my questions was, you had said that there would be, your initial budget was estimated at $1.2 million with possible grant opportunities for startup costs. What startup costs have you really identified with this?
Well, depending on, we're going to need some level of staffing. They will need a workspace. They will need a computer, telephones, things like that, just office-type amenities.
And where do you envision that $1.2 million coming from? Would that be part of the overall 33?
That will be part of the funding, part of the $33 million advanced through the county treasury.
Great. One of the things that, of course, raised a flag in my mind, because I live in the east end of the county, is I don't see propane suppliers, propane companies in here. I would encourage us to reach out to them if possible. So much of the eastern end of the county is serviced through propane, not necessarily with any.
I know that, and I didn't list that just because I needed to investigate that further. I'm not sure how that will work, but I understand that it's there.
Yeah. And then, the second piece of that, of course, is wood stove suppliers and pellet stove suppliers. I don't know if there's opportunities there for us to partner potentially with air quality. They already have their wood stove program, but I could definitely see a tie-in there that might benefit us all.
To the extent there's a nexus to energy efficiency, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. You did say that in terms of permitting, inspection would be required when no permit was required. How do you envision that process working?
That what we would ask is that the building departments would provide that inspection and charge an inspection fee for that. So, they're not going to be looking for code compliance, but they're going to be looking at the improvements listed on the contract and ensuring that they are installed, that they are, all improvements have to be permanently affixed to the property. So, that's what they're going to be checking for, is the tankless water heater, in fact, installed, permanently affixed.
Is really actually there.
Those types of things, yeah.
Absolutely. My guess, then, is that that would need to come in front of this board for some sort of approval of this new process and the fees associated with that.
Yes, actually, as a program would be developed, there's a number of things that'd probably come back to your board. And if you so choose to proceed, we're working with the Treasurer's Office and the departments to make sure we had a consolidated response to that, including some of these grant opportunities. Because I'm a little concerned, the CEC grants that, I'm not sure if they're being talked about here, are looked at as for energy conservation, which is a benefit to all taxpayers, not as particularly to an enterprise fund. And we'd be looking at this as truly an enterprise fund. So, the cost of the employees, the cost of the office space, the cost of all this ancillary support services would be charged back to the program, and that'd be a bear on the program to pay all those costs.
Okay. And then, just two last, very quick questions. In your summary of the financing plan risks, you had indicated that you thought there might be some risks associated with future bond sales due to the newness of AB 811. Do you see any potential risks if a whole ton of jurisdictions jump onto this, that the bond market might be saturated with this sort of offering?
Not at this point in time, not at this point in time. The only one that I know of that is actually out there is Boulder, Colorado, has actually issued debt on a similar program that exists in Colorado. And Sonoma is getting ready, but the demand is there. There's actually demand. When I put on my other hat, my portfolio management hat, and look at, you know, the industry news, there is increasing demand for this.
And then, just my last question is really sort of more of a comment. Again, in the program benefits piece that you presented to us, in the board package, you refer to the August 18 authorization from this board, authorizing Facility Services to prepare a grant application package to fund energy efficiency projects, and the potential for you to work with them to potentially utilize that grant funding to defray some of the costs.
Yeah, that specific, that grant specifically contains language for funding AB 811 programs. So, I've just had some preliminary discussions with Facility Services, very preliminary. And so, they have considered some projects, and we need to include the CEO's office in that conversation and then make sure that the board would be on board with any allocation of that money. I think it was, I don't remember, it was late August or early September that the board authorized pursuing Placer County's allocation, which is just over $600,000. And again, to the extent we can use that money or other grant funding, I believe other funding will come available over time. We minimize those administrative costs and can in turn reduce the rate to the property owners.
Great. Thank you very much. Just, you know, really, again, great work on this to you and your staff. Just thanks to everybody, and also to, I know Sonoma County has been very helpful. And just, good job. Thank you.
Good job. Anybody else wish to address this item? May we please have your name and address, please, for the record?
My name is E. Christina Dobbis. I live in Grass Valley, California. I'm the elected Treasurer-Tax Collector for Nevada County. I'm on my seventh consecutive term, 38 years in office, 38 years with the county. First, before I talk about Janine, it's long overdue that from me to your board and those that were before you to say, "Thank you. You've been a wonderful neighbor, a wonderful benefactor to us smaller counties." And maybe people don't have that historical knowledge, but I do. And even with this program, evidence is right there that she, that Janine has set it up so us smaller counties and jurisdictions can come on board, where we could not possibly do this on our own. We're too small. I see that you have one of our best, Tom Miller. In all of those 38 years, I have never, ever seen a situation like this, where it is win, win, win for everybody. Never have I seen that. Now, let me point out what Ms. Windenhausen has not said. Maybe you've connected the dots. It was a year ago, maybe two, when your water district, your water agency, Placer County Water Agency, was looking at meeting the new FERC requirements. It was Janine that came up with a plan. It was that plan that spurred this. Her proposal, her way of handling that plan, when AB 811 came up, somebody says, "Well, jeez, Janine did this. Maybe we could apply." Isn't that true?
We can't give her a raise though.
She is fantastic. I'll tell you better than a raise. You better tie her to the desk, because somebody's going to take her. I stand ready. I have earmarked from our peak portfolio at $200 million. We're not at a billion, at $200 million. I have earmarked between $5 and $10 million as an investment from my treasury pool into this system also. So, your money is not a loan. There may be other smaller counties that could do the same thing too, neighboring jurisdictions. So, please keep us in the loop. Our board has cursory knowledge about this. Ed Schofield and the Chairman of the Board, Hank Weston, they are interested and they're watching, they'll be watching your presentation later on video, I'm sure. So, thank, yes, sir.
I'm just going to say, I went to high school with Ed Schofield.
Did you real, so did I. That's why I know your name. Oh, my goodness.
I hope that's not a good light.
Now, let's not talk about the rival football teams. That's where we don't get along.
Created by the Union, '63.
Says 65 for me. Yeah, Ed is old, isn't he? Sorry, Ed. Thank you, thank you for all that you've done and all that you continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Julia.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm wonderful. I'm Julia Burrows. I'm the Deputy City Manager for Roseville, and I'm joined, we usually don't travel in threes from the city of Roseville, but this is so important that I'm joined by Marty Bailey, who is our Retail Manager in Roseville Electric, and also our Assistant Finance Director, Ed O'Bourn. But I just have to say, if you have a Facebook fan page, I want to join it, because you're wonderful and you're hard to follow. The city has been researching a number of alternatives to participate in AB 811, looking at the city by ourself, looking at participating with municipal electric utilities, looking at the state, looking at the region. And so, when Janine called, as Mike said, this is the ideal AB 811 program, and so, thank you. Because we had some high fives going on at the city of Roseville when we heard that the county was going to pursue the program in this way. We anticipate a huge demand for this in the city. We turn away people who would like to take advantage of our rebates. And so, we think that there will be a line out the door, and we volunteer to have an office at the city of Roseville. If you would like to have a storefront, we'll provide some office space. We fully support the inclusion of water conservation, because as purveyors of our own water in the city of Roseville, that's very, very important to include. We will support your success by marketing the program through every freeway that we can, on our website, through our utility bills, through the contractors, through the banks and lenders in Roseville. And we see this as a cornerstone in the city of Roseville for complying with AB 32. So, we are just starting our community-wide sustainability action plan with a grant from the Placer County Air Pollution Control District. That's how we're going to get there, community-wide, to reduce emissions, and this will be one of those trademark programs that helps us get there. We applaud your leadership. We are very grateful to Janine and her staff for assembling this program. And we congratulate you for joining that elite list that's talked about at every conference, Berkeley, Palm Desert, Sonoma County, and now Placer County. You'll be among the Fab Four that has these programs going forward. And we are just so looking forward to helping our property owners lower their energy usage, lower their water usage, lower their bills, and help us reduce emissions in the city of Roseville. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Scoopick, and I, my address, 8475 Laurel Lane. I'm a Placer County resident in Granite Bay, and I want to be first in line, just want to tell you, that I will camp out. I will, I will, I know where she lives. I'm here, actually, on three levels today. One is as a Placer County resident to support this program, and I did see the article. Second is that I am a Vice President with Chicago and Fidelity National Title Companies, and I've been tracking the green movement for a number of years, probably now six, watching what's happening in the sustainability world, figuring out, how will this ever relate to my industry, the title industry, and how can I help to, you know, move it forward? And then, third, I'm actually on the Finance Committee of the Green Cabinet. And the President of our Green Cabinet, Russell Garcia, is here. He'll be addressing you as well. But part of my responsibility in that capacity, in that nonprofit group, is locating sources of funding for sustainable improvements on both residential and commercial. The Green Cabinet is primarily focused on commercial. So, I met with Janine, and when I found out about how proactive she'd already been and how far ahead of the game she is, I got so excited that I told her, "I really want to come and support your effort." And I applaud not only Janine, but also the board for being proactive in this regard. And she failed to mention that on the Berkeley plan, that plan, their funding sold out in eight minutes. It was gone in eight minutes. So, it's, and the demand is huge. The backside of this, too, from the investment standpoint, is enormous. One of the things that I've, the challenges that I've had is, why would I even be wasting my time, quote-unquote, "as a title company representative," getting into the green movement? Well, just recently, I was able to do, and I told you so, to all of the naysayers, because the Insurance Commission has proposed AB 1011, which is going to require the entire insurance industry, casualty as well as real property insurance companies, to provide specifically products and services for the consumer to help ensure their sustainability measures, whether it's commercial or residential. So, those were some of the discussions, and I would like to offer to be a resource to County Council as well on this issue to protect the county. You are a lender. You do have liability, and there are ways to protect you in that capacity on a number of levels. And the consumer, that can all be worked into, whatever the consumer's application is at that point. So, again, I applaud you. I will follow closely the progress. And I'm excited that, actually, you're making this move, and I would highly encourage you to vote yes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board Supervisors. My name is Russell Garcia. I'm here on three levels myself. As a resident at 12826 Baltic Circle, just around the corner. Been a resident in Placer County for about six years now. And this is a tough group to follow here, complimenting Janine on the wonderful job that she's done here. But it is absolutely fantastic, the leadership position that she's taken in putting together a program like this. The levels I'm here is not just a resident, but as an employee at Johnson Controls, a LEED accredited professional. My job is chartered as to put solutions together for building owners to become more efficient and sustainable, and provide resources as well for them to be able to get everything they need to accomplish that goal. And I'm also here as a President of the Green Cabinet, a nonprofit organization to provide resources for businesses, buildings, and residents who want to become more sustainable and efficient, but just don't know where to go. So, it's a one-stop shop for sustainability resources. I do want to say that definitely Janine is ahead of the curve. At Johnson Controls, I work a lot with the state of California and a lot of the cities, local governments here, Placerville, Washoe County up in Nevada, the city of Reno. And then, what we're finding is that everybody's still waiting of what to do, what programs to follow, and they're waiting for that leadership representation. And what I found here today in listening to this presentation about Empower is this is the leadership that they're looking for. And what I'd like to do, if you're not going to give her a raise, is just take her around with me to all the different cities and counties, so that I can help socialize this program and so we can get other cities and counties to move forward with this type of a program, so that we can all stimulate our economy, reduce our carbon footprint, increase energy. so that we can all stimulate our economy, reduce our carbon footprint, increase energy efficiency. And I would like to say a couple more things that, what our findings are, we do sustainability assessments at Johnson Controls, we do them at the Green Cabinet as well, to see what the baseline measurements are for these businesses and buildings. And what we're finding is that they are inefficient. Energy Star score is below 60, price per square footage per kilowatt upwards, above $3 for small square footage buildings. And that we'll lay out what they can do in front of the building owner as far as X, Y, and Z for different project work, and they're saying, "That's great. Now, who's going to pay for it?" Like Supervisor Euler was saying, that without having to spend a huge capital outlay, they're having to look at their net operating income for different ways to move that around to be able to fund these projects. So, if there was a financing vehicle in place, like this Empower program, they would be able to move forward with the financing, get the project work done, keep their net operating income the same, and watch it gradually lower as the savings are harvested through the project work. What's that?
And get the rebates.
And get, I mean, and get the rebates, and then they get to market it, that they're doing the right thing. There's many different levels of benefits. I think one of the things you addressed, Supervisor Euler, is the, how the marketing is going to be handled, and we feel that socializing, oh, is that it for me?
Go ahead, finish.
Okay. That socializing the messaging is important, so we can do that through the platform of nonprofit organizations, and that the benefits really are to stimulate the economy and to increase the business's cash flow so they can expand, they can market, they can hire more employees, employees, or they can keep their employees. So, I just think that's important to keep in mind for these benefits, as well as the energy reduction of costs. So, thank you very much, and I applaud Janine for her efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Angela Shepherd, and I'm with Valley Vision in Sacramento, which most of you have heard of, I know. And we're a nonprofit who focuses on quality of life and ensuring quality of life in this greater Sacramento region by way of collaborating stakeholders in the Sacramento region. And we've actually been talking with clean energy companies, including solar companies and home builders, green retrofit home builders, in our, a series of CEO roundtables at the beginning of the year. And we heard from these companies that this would be a great job creation tool and definitely ensure their, a customer, a large customer response. They, these companies told us that a lot of their customers are ready to do clean energy efficiency retrofits on their homes, and they really want to lower their utility bills, but sometimes having the upfront financing for those, for those retrofits can be difficult to obtain, and this would definitely ensure an easier way for the clean energy company clients to obtain financing and lower their utility bills. So, I just wanted to point that out, that we've been hearing this for, at least since the beginning of this year, from companies, that this would be a great job creation tool, and they'd be able to hire employees, and that also their customers would be, would be able to take advantage of this program. So, I would really encourage you to move forward on this. And also, we are, we have been scoping the feasibility of an AB 811 program in the region, and we've talked, we've also talked to Sonoma County, and we heard that a county-wide program at least, if not regional, program is better for marketing efforts and really drives demand. And so, we would also like to serve as sort of a conduit for marketing. We, we actually have a webpage on our Green Cap Alliance project website dedicated to AB 811, and we have resources on that website and can definitely serve as a tool for educating folks about this program. And again, we just really encourage you to move forward on this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? I'll close it back, I'll close the comment and bring it back to the board for any questions. I would just like to add, Janine, I think your forward thinking on this is just amazing, and I appreciate the job you do, looking after the county, and you do an outstanding job. I mean, I can't think of many places that, in this economy, our treasurer's still been able to keep us making a little bit of money, not much, but at least we're not losing money. So, thank you for all you do.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, just move that we accept the proposed feasibility analysis and authorize the treasurer tax collector to initiate the AB 811 program implementation activities, return to the board necessary action items.
All those in favor?
And then, if I may, just quickly enter discussion. It has been pointed out, rightly so, Janine's efforts in putting this together. However, I think we as a board and the public at large should also recognize the role the CEO's office has played in absorbing a significant amount of information on a topic that's relatively new, making sure, prior to bringing it to the board, that the county's interests are going to be well-served and protected throughout this process. CEO's office did an admirable job in, in making sure that Janine was able to get agendized, have the appropriate amount of time to present a lot of information, and just work very cooperatively with Janine in this process. And so, I want to recognize Tom and his, his staff for the role they played in getting this item to us.
If I might, if I can just add that if, with the board making a commitment to this, that an integrated effort, as I mentioned, there are going to be a lot of stakeholders, there's going to be an internal team, and that's going to be very important to have the cooperation and the support and to move, to move the program forward. And also, if I can just take the opportunity to acknowledge my staff, they're sitting here in the front row. Rob Kang, Kangies provides administrative support, Diane Handy and Kimberly Holly are treasury financial gurus. Ken DePore is in IT, and my assistant treasurer tax collector, who runs around and keeps everything together in, in the path that I leave. And we've been watching the AB 811 program for a little less than a year, following Sonoma County, and had staff meeting, got together, kind of got in the huddle, and yeah, we should do this, and they went out long. And so, with your help and the support of other county departments and the CEO's office, we'll go for the goal on this.
Do you want to make comment, Jim? No, I think you are. I was just, I was just going to say, this must be my, somebody's lucky day, talking about green, I was appointed to the Green Print Steering Committee for SACOG. I have no idea what it is, but I'll. I'll report that.
You'll be working with the Tree Foundation.
So, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll take up the 10 o'clock item. Everybody's leaving. I probably went.
Okay. Okay, good morning again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the next item, we're going to be taking action necessary to establish the fees of the newly established county-operated substance abuse treatment program. There are three specific actions that we are requesting. One, to conduct a public hearing to consider the establishment of fees for our county-operated substance abuse treatment program. Two, to adopt an ordinance to amend Section 111 of Article 2.116 of Chapter 2 of the Placer County Code to add the substance abuse treatment fees. And three, to adopt a resolution that will establish the specific substance abuse treatment fees and a sliding scale based upon a person's ability to pay. As a result of the elimination of state funds for what was Proposition 36 of the Substance Abuse Crime Prevention Act, Placer County has established a licensed substance abuse treatment program in order to centralize all-out client treatment and assessment center and consolidate all funding streams for increased efficiencies. Prior to this year, all the treatment services were contracted to community-based organizations, and county staff provided assessments, referrals, and case management. The new service program provided by the county continues to be funded by a combination of federal, state, local, and private funds. I would just make a note that no county general funds are a part of this program. And pursuant to federal regulations, we must make every reasonable effort to secure payments from clients in accordance to their ability to pay. So, the proposed resolution establishes the fees for the substance abuse treatment program as well as a federally mandated sliding scale fee schedule, and authorizes the department to waive these fees in extraordinary circumstances. The fee is based on a projection of what the actual cost of providing this treatment will be in the current year, utilizing the cost of service in the most recently completed state substance abuse cost report. The schedule reduces this fee based on a person's income and number of dependents. The proposed resolution will establish program cost, a system to determine income eligibility, and collection from clients for services based on their ability to pay. The fees will offset the cost of the substance abuse treatment program. I would also note that as the target population to be served by this new program are those persons with very low or limited income, we are expecting the fees to be small and expect about $25,000 of offsetting revenue as a result of these collections. So, with that, I would recommend approval of the actions and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Kirk?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just had one question. That is, the determination of somebody's ability to pay, at what point in the process is that determination made? Is it prior to the service delivery?
Correct. It's part of the initial, we, we do a screening that doesn't have a charge, and we actually are trying to move people to all resources that are available. So, we're really widening, and so, if you have resources, we would find a place to match those up. So, that screening is free, but if we take you into the treatment program, then we'll go through a financial and other kind of assessment process first.
And, and the, the individual is notified of your determination on their ability to pay, as well as what the associated charges for the services are going to be prior to incurring that cost?
Correct.
So, on a county supervisor's side, what would I expect to?
Kirk, for you, free.
Almost free, almost free, yeah. All right, I have no other questions. Thank you.
We had a motion. Oh. I didn't see anybody that I thought was going to open up the, for the, for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to comment on this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. We had a motion. We have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll take up the 10:20 item.
Jim Laboo, Redevelopment Agency. The proposed action is to authorize the submission of a community development block grant, economic development grant application of up to $2.5 million for the Hilltop Center project in Bowman. The Hilltop Center project is located on Bowman Road and Mill Pond Road and is the proposed development of 142-room Marriott Spring Hills Suites Hotel Complex, which would also have two restaurants, additional retail uses, swimming pool deck, and parking. On September 25, 2008, the Planning Commission certified the mitigated negative declaration and approved the conditional use permit and related actions for the Hilltop Center project. The site owner and developer is Hilltop LLC, and their primary representative, Hoss Bozargad, has requested that the county seek a state CDBG grant to assist with project infrastructure costs. These costs include road improvements, driveways, streetlights, sewer lines, fire protection water tanks and lines, retaining walls, sidewalks, and a bike path. The total project cost estimate is approximately $29 million, and the proposed $2.5 million grant would represent approximately 9% of the total project financing. The project is considered eligible for state CDBG funds because of the strong economic development benefit it would bring to the area. The project is expected to create more than 75 full-time equivalent new jobs and serve as an anchor and stimulus for the entire Bowman Commercial District. Several recent economic development studies have recommended additional new motels be developed in the North Auburn and Bowman area. For example, in 2007, the county received the commission study from Marie Jones Consulting called the North Auburn Market and Commercial Study, which specifically identified hotels as, we have a demand for more, and there's a need to support other businesses in the area. And the I-80 corridor in the Bowman area was the primary location targeted in that study as the best location for such a hotel. At our recent Auburn Airport Economic Development Forum, the need for new high-quality lodging in the area was also voiced by a number of the workshop participants. In recent years, the county has received two other CDBG economic development grants that have leveraged private investment dollars and led to significant improvements in our community. First one being public improvements on Highway 49 associated with the Auburn Plaza Shopping Center, new shopping center that opened recently. And the second one was for public improvements surrounding the Rock Creek Plaza Shopping Center at Highway 49 and Bell Road. That center leveraged the grant funds to make significant improvements to the center overall and bring in two new stores, Best Buy and Bevmo. Staff is currently in discussion with the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, and the developer to prepare this application. The developer will need to demonstrate to HCD their ability to comply with all state requirements. So, submission of the application is contingent on Hilltop LLC's ability to satisfy the state. If the grant is approved, we will return to your board with a development agreement that spells out the conditions that the, that the developer will need to satisfy in order to access the funds. For example, the developer will need to complete the project satisfactorily, create the jobs, provide all the documentation required for HCD reporting, and in addition, they will need to take on any risk of the project and provide a letter of credit to guarantee that pledge. That concludes the report.
Any questions? Anybody in the audience wish to comment on this item? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the board. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Great presentation. Now, we got Barbara Bassano is going to entertain us for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Barbara Bassano with the Sheriff's Department Administrative Services Manager. I should know how to clear the room here, huh? The first item before you, 8A, is the anti-drug abuse enforcement program and application for 2009, 2010. This amount estimated this year is $259,824, of which $170,000 is allocated to the cost of a deputy sheriff. Now, this cost is not just salary and benefits, that also includes other costs that are attributed to that position, as well as position, the remainder of the funds is for the other allied agency support throughout the county to support that task force. At the beginning, when we submitted this board item, the approval and agencies had not yet met to decide how those funds would be allocated to the allied agencies. Since that time, they have met, and the grant will be submitted with the use of Auburn Police Department and having some of their staff provide additional resources to that task force, as well as overtime for all the agencies. In the past few years, Auburn had not been able to participate, and through the approval of a JAG grant, we have over 50% of a probation officer within Placer County participating, as well as Roseville and Rockland. This is an increase from our budget. We originally thought $152,000 would be applied to this grant. Good news that we got more money that fully funds our officers, as well as the other allied agency support. There is a budget revision for your approval in the amount of just over $106,000. There are no general dollars applied to this task force at this time. Thank you.
Is this the PLE SIU?
PLE is involved, but PLE is a larger agency, the Public Law Enforcement, Placer Law Enforcement Agency, so the task force.
Specialized?
Yes, it includes DA, probation, and the police chiefs.
Anyone in the audience wish? Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this item? Board? Roll call.
Euler?
Aye.
Wigan?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I will take up B.
8B is recommended that your board approve the MOU, Memorandum of Understanding with the Superior Court of California. This has been a work in progress for the last eight months in updating our MOU to be compliant with their Act of 2002, as well as their most current Financial Policy 1401. The MOU is in the amount of $3,525,661 for 2009-10. This does constitute, as presented in the final budget, a reduction to our budget of about $600,000, but the operating costs from last year are just over half a million dollars. This constitutes a reduction of four deputy sheriffs to the court security program as requested by the courts, and this is a result of their reduced funding at the court level, as well as the reduction in their furlough days in 10 months of this year. And the attached is the staffing plan for both historic and the Superior Courts. This will be reviewed on an annual basis to right-size that, depending on what the funding levels of the court are. And we have had a good relationship developing this with the courts, and it has just been, I just got it back signed by the presiding judge this morning for the chair's signature based on approval from your board. Now I'll open any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this item? Bring it back to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Item 8C is the annual report that we provide to the state in regards to vehicle code 925.014 and 19.014 is for the Placer Regional Auto Theft Task Force, and 019 is for the automated fixed and mobile fingerprint funds. In March of 2007, you'll recall that your board approved the addition of the $1 fee for vehicles and $2 for commercial for the implementation of these two funds. This is a separate fund that is interest-bearing, separate and apart from the Sheriff's Department budget. We do the oversight, and those funds pass through our treasury. For the auto theft task force, that is run by the sergeant, a CHP sergeant, and they have staffing, and Captain Bill Donovan is here if we have questions or need additional information for your review. We are also a partner in the task force with Roseville, Rockland, and the National Crime Bureau, Insurance Crime Bureau, excuse me. As they indicated last year, as a result of this task force, percentage reduction in the insurance rates of Placer County residents was in effect, and this year we have collected over $361,351. That does include interest that was accrued. You'll note in the actual expenditures, we had a kind of a faux pas at the end of the year where the participating agencies did not submit their invoices in time to be paid by June 30th. So those monies were carried over, those monies were actually spent or expended in the last fiscal year, and they've since been paid. But that is one thing that just to note on, on there. On the fixed and mobile fingerprint fund, there, last year, the RAN Board had not yet met and approved a plan. They met last year several times, and your board approved the preliminary plan for 910 and 89 and 910. And so far, they've spent about $30,000 in, plus plans to implement in-car cameras, or planning, they spent LifeScan for both all the agencies within the county and mobile data computers. And if you have any questions, that might be, excuse me, $257,000 for the auto theft task force. This year, the first payment received was about a little over $94,000, was it, which was in excess of our expectations, and with the economy, we try to be a little bit conservative because we don't know how those assessments will be this year. With that, we'll open it to the board for any questions.
The captain, would you like to make any comments? You don't have to, but if you'd like to, we certainly want to hear from you.
I can be real brief. Bill Donovan, I'm the captain from the Auburn office, but also the commander of this task force. I believe you have the numbers of the investigations and the investigation assists. What I'd like to add is, this being the second full year of the task force, the, the task force is kind of developing into a, a resource for all county law enforcement. The numbers reflect an actual downturn on the, the investigations and arrests initiated by the task force, but what it also shows is the assists have all gone up. So now they're seen as a resource for all the agencies that have an auto theft-related problem, or if it's connected to, to another crime, that they're being called in now. So I, I think from hard work over the last two and a half years, they, they are actually identified as, as an outstanding task force, and, and a resource for everybody.
And I would agree with that. I think it's an absolutely great resource. I remember my days in the street, if you had specialists in that, if you served in a search warrant, you called in those folks to run all the cars that, because they generally, the crooks are all the same, they all have a bunch of junkers or something there to run. Kirk, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, just a question. We see year over year, a slight decline in the number of thefts, but a rather significant decrease in the percentage of recoveries. And I'm curious, is that just the numbers not working for some reason, or what's, what's the reason for that drop in recoveries?
Yeah, these are, these are county-wide numbers. We're not sure why the recoveries are down so much. It surprised me to see those numbers. Auto theft statewide is actually down a little bit, and, and the number of thefts show down slightly. But the recoveries is unusual. We don't know if it's tied to more advanced chop shops, or if they're being moved out to neighboring counties. We, we checked the neighboring counties for Placer County recoveries. There's been a few in Sacramento County, Nevada County, but statewide, we haven't found those cars. So I'm going to task the task force this year at, at trying to figure out where they're taking the cars, or if they're, if they're still in the county and they're just not available. I think through education programs from the task force providing training to all the law enforcement agencies, that'll help with that recovery rate.
And I just want to emphasize that, that number for theft and recoveries is for the entire county, while the numbers on the operational activity is, is for the task force, which are fairly comparable to last year. I did not bring that with me, you know, to, to present to the board, but those numbers are, numbers are more in line. It's the total county-wide activity that, that is impacted.
Cash for clunkers, maybe. They stole them and then turned them in, and got new cars. Jim, did you want to make comment, or Jennifer?
Yes, I just, I wanted to note that since '06-'07, the theft rate is down by 25%, which is pretty impressive. And the, the recovery rate is, you know, it was 74% in '06-'07, 71% last year, so that's probably not statistically too much of a, of a huge change. But what, what do you attribute the, the drop in thefts to?
I, I think the, the major drop in, in thefts is because of a proactive program of the county. It, it's no longer reactive. Before, before the task force, we reacted to stolen cars, we'd take the report, and we'd try to follow up on it. They're actually going out and, and being proactive and, and, and getting the auto thieves, you know, in, in the process, or through complex investigations, actually just reeling them in.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you. Both of you, great report.
One thing I would like to comment to the board that you'll be hearing on the upcoming ledge, ledge information, is that you'll note that there is sunsetts for the task force this year, and we'll be, be questioning your support to have those sunsets extended, so, for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Is this an action item?
Perl.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Board will now go into closed session, take up items on page three, item number nine. I'm sure the board will be happy to know that we will not be presenting the one existing litigation matter. We will skip to labor negotiations, and then the, while in closed session, we will adjourn as the board, and reconvene as the Placer County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority and have labor negotiations with regards to the IHSS. That closes this announcement. We'll be back later.
Thank you.